Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Ray, ask you.
Travis last name.
Christine Wells. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Conflicts of interest, any to declare at this time? And I have none. Approval of the October sixth twenty twenty five agenda?
And make motion to review that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the September eighth twenty twenty five meeting minutes?
I had to make motion on your approved good manners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, committee reports. Finance officer.
Okay, so as of today, or as of the end of September, I should say, and we had a hundred forty seven thousand three forty six sixty in the bank account. Um, I don't have the breakout. I was trying to have it today, but I broke like which were all the funds and water fund and all of that. So everyone has their own breakout. Unfortunately, I fat fingered something, so I have to, I broke the spreadsheet, so I'm fixing that working on it this week, but I will have that breakout for everybody if you wanna see it. Before next meeting, feel free to come down and stop at the office. I'll go over it and do whatever. Um, also, um, this month, this month's disbursements for October, there's a total of twenty six thousand seven forty one eighty one in disbursements. It is a little bit high because we had to pay our first bill for the, um, phase two of the water project, the design phase, which is ten thousand two hundred, but we will be getting that back. I just gotta put in the information to get that sent back to us. We paid upfront and then they sent it back through the funding. So that will, that will help us out so that never will go down significantly. There is a list of all the disbursements for this month. I think anyone like to see? And then, um, Christine, for the minutes if you need it, we, we had last month in September, we had fifteen thousand five eighty four credit, um, and nineteen cents and thirteen thousand three oh seven ninety one debt. And I'll put that on the sheet once I fix the error that I made. Um, then the, I think that's all I have for this time. Haven't just so everyone is aware, we can get the licensing for, um, I gave Shirley hers, but we could get all of the liquor licensing that are due December first. So I'll deliver a rate to him, um, probably tomorrow or it'll probably be Wednesday. Um, they have to be turned by December first, so I will have those for the meeting next month to sign and send out so we can have them out of my girl.
And we're gonna change it, so next time when we get on, we get everything all in one meeting. So if not a week and whatnot.
Right. Yep, yep, absolutely.
And the check will be ready?
Yes, I will, I will have a check with me. It will be signed and ready. So as soon as I get those back, it'll come with us. That's due December first, but it'll come to our November meeting with the check and everything ready to go, and it'll be dropped in the mail. It'll take us directly to Hot Springs the next day.
Okay.
And drop them, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I did keep a copy of those just so in case we need it. I can have the copy when I hand it.
We'd like to get that post office read, so we actually get our mail letters posted, none of this crap that's going on.
Yeah.
I've heard somebody complaining about these boxes. I know a lot of getting other people's mail, so I was wondering where my mail is going.
Yeah, I don't know. There's, there's been a lot of issues that I've heard, so.
Yeah, yeah, and just for that, I'm not gonna interrupt her. When they had our stuff come from Rapid City right here, we didn't have any issues.
Yeah.
Now you go to Hot Springs and then here, everybody's getting somebody else's mail.
Yep.
And then.
Or you have.
Or you don't have.
You have packages, and if you don't catch the mail person out here, they'll leave you the card in your mailbox, but you know, you have a package in Hot Springs because it's too big, too big to fit in the boxes. I done Zach's crap about that one three times now. Or they put the package in the parcel, don't put the parcel key in your box, so your package is sitting there and they can open it up and take it. That's twice.
So the mail used to come from Rapid down here to this post office?
Yeah, it used to come from Rapid here, then to Hot Springs.
Truck would stop. Truck would stop here at six o'clock in the morning and you go to Hot Springs.
That explains something, because we, we've had problems with our post office box in Hot Springs and our mailbox here, and I thought, well, if the post office box maybe it'd be easier. You know, we keep getting a problem too, so okay, it's the post office.
It's a distribution.
It's a post office.
There we go.
It's a distribution.
And at four thirty, they'd trip from Rapid City would pick up our outgoing mail.
Five, five o'clock.
And it's faithful, or five o'clock.
Five o'clock, five, five oh one. That guy would show up. He was like a clock.
Yep, and now.
But, but now you don't know.
Nope.
It's Hot Springs that picks it up.
You don't stop there no more.
Yeah, I'll last your step from here, but I, yeah, I'll take, I take all of that type of stuff directly down.
He used to stop every night to pick up the blue box that was out there, but they took that box away, so now he doesn't stop there anymore.
Yeah.
Alright, we can talk about mail today.
Absolutely. No, you're fine.
Thanks for the segue. Hit it off our chest.
Okay, I was just mean, now I don't.
No, no, I meant.
I don't know if anybody asked any questions.
Anything else? I have one thing, and that was in the email that I sent you, the Department of Revenue. So Rebecca called me from the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
And, um, they're looking for back sales tax for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, the only records that we have, because the computer, we don't know what happened with the computer. And then the water computer was subpoenaed to the investigation. Um, the only records that we have is what was submitted in the annual reports to the legislative audit. I looked in those annual reports and I have the dollar amounts for those years.
Okay.
Um, what I don't have is the interest and penalties that we will have to pay for those years. And the dollar amount for twenty sixteen is sixteen thousand five eighty four, twenty seventeen it's seventeen thousand two fifty eight, and twenty eighteen it's twelve thousand and twenty. And let me back up, I think I failed to mention, this is for our trash collection.
But did they get ahold of you?
Um, Cheyenne sanitation?
Yes.
Not yet.
Oh, they called me.
Did they get ahold of me? Oh, they did.
They called me.
Okay.
And asked who was doing this. I gave them your number.
Okay, good.
And I gave them your number.
Okay.
So if they call either one of you two, I gave them your number.
Okay, that's fine.
It was from Cheyenne. They called me. I was like, who's running this now? And I gave you guys their numbers, so they contacted us.
Alright, awesome. Thanks, Tom.
Christine?
Yeah.
We don't owe sixteen in taxes. That's just the total sales.
No, also this is sales.
Okay. I just like.
I don't know that these are, this is just what was reported as sanitation in there, so I don't know if these were sales or expenses. Um, because those reports look odd to me, and even to the auditor when I inquired to him where I would find this information. This is what they recommended to use because the reports do not look like, the numbers don't look correct.
Okay.
In what was reported, but I have nothing to go back on. And I don't even have the water system because that was on the computer that the, that the state subpoenaed. And when I asked them to run a report from there, they said, uh, no.
Now, in other words, they're, they're just guessing, and they're, they're surmising, and they're all of the above. And then, then on that one there, and at that point and whatever, did any of us, uh, be, were, are, were we even aware of the fact that we were supposed to be charging sales tax on that, uh, thing? And now then, on that standpoint, now we do carry some errors in emission, uh, insurance.
Okay, so we knew, they knew about the state's sales tax because the, the city had a sales tax ID, so.
I know, how, how, excuse me, Carrie, but how did we know about that? Now, I was on this, this board, well, a long time ago, and there was never no, lo- long before there was a trash collection doodad in town, we used to have a box over here, and everybody dumped their trash in it, and then once a month they come and empty the box.
I can't.
Is that right, Steve?
And I, I can't speak for what the past finance officer disclosed to the board members or not. I cannot speak to that.
I don't remember that.
I can only share with you what the state has come forward to request, and so we're not gonna play a guessing game of what the amounts were. Um, these numbers were suggested to me by the state auditor to use.
Right, right, red, red damn.
Um, so I don't know what happened between the board. I don't know the conversations.
I'm beautiful.
Um, so I can't, I, all we can do is go forward, and I'm just informing, I told Rebecca that we were having a meeting, that I would inform the board of the situation, and.
Well, I'm gonna fight it.
Um.
You're gonna fight paying the taxes?
Yes.
Because they, they should, they shouldn't have been paid illegally. The law says that you have to pay them.
Yeah, but what are you gonna fight, Ray? I guess maybe that would be my question.
I don't believe that we, we owe.
If we didn't pay it, we owe.
Were we aware of the fact that we owed it?
Ignorance of the law is not an excuse.
That's, that's neither here nor there.
It isn't.
Alright, okay.
The finance officer was supposed to follow up and do their filings and make the payments. That was.
And now, why, why, why didn't that happen yearly?
Well, that's a good question.
It happens monthly.
Not monthly. I mean, uh, what, what, what did it?
And that's something.
Why didn't that happen monthly?
You would have to ask Heather.
That's something we can't, we, we can't speak to that.
Yeah, I wasn't here that time. I wasn't over there.
But I do know that the dump was closed prior to twenty sixteen, so trash was being collected from Cheyenne sanitation in twenty sixteen.
Dump was closed prior to two thousand ten, I can hear you.
Yeah.
That's why I'm not here. We got sanitation service.
When I called Cheyenne sanitation, our contract started with them back around twenty thirteen or something like that. They didn't have an exact copy of it, but they knew that because we've always used them.
It was, it was at least ten thousand ten.
Yeah.
So.
But I think.
Now, prior to that, it was Sanders sanitation.
Sanders is who we had first, yeah.
Oh, they made it Sanders in two thousand ten.
And they brought a dumpster down here by the ball field for like a minute.
So Christine, so you already called them and you're saying they don't have records back that far either? Or did you ask?
Well, they changed owners.
Oh, okay.
And so.
Well, yeah.
I would, I would be cautious unless I had some hard copy.
Right.
That said, with the annual reports that were reported to the auditor, that, you know, for those years are documented numbers, and I would say.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just didn't know if you had asked them, but I'm fine with that, okay?
That may be better in our favor, because that's lower than what, right?
And that's what I was, I was hesitant to dig any deeper into this because it's past years, and I wasn't here to speak to the history.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So I can only go with what's, um, reported.
No, that's fine.
To the, to the state.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, so I told her that I would bring this to the board, um, and that we would have to find out what those interesting, interest penalties
Mm-hmm.
and late fees are gonna be. And I know what they were for twenty nineteen. It was well over seventeen hundred dollars for twenty nineteen, only because we've already paid back taxes back to twenty nineteen.
Right.
It's always done with all this, the last payment we made to the state and all that, dah dah dah, whatever.
It would.
And it's obvious they're, they're, that they're just bleeding some more.
Well, you'll just wait until the agenda. We got some more stuff that's come up, so, um.
I'll see, I'll look at those. I'll see where that can probably run through.
But I'll hand it off to you and let you work with them on that, and I'll give you the reports where I got the numbers from.
Okay. Yeah, I can see. That would be fabulous.
And so.
Okay.
But, and then, um, alright, so that's what I have from Department of Revenue. It's really for information. Um, anything, any questions or assistance on that?
Now, I'm not making another comment.
Okay.
I'm tired of the state of South Dakota trying to bleed us. Every time we have a meeting, they're wanting another four or five thousand dollars. And I'm fucking, pardon my French. I'm, I'm fed up. Well, the state, every time they turn around, they want a little more money from us. And dah dah, and I'm fed up with.
We're ready.
Let, let, let's get this resolved if we have, uh, or haven't, or have, for whatever you want to call it, an issue. And let's, let's get this resolved to where we don't have any more surprises.
We can do our best. That's all we can do.
That, that, that's all I'm saying.
Alright, the chair entertains a motion to pay the monthly expenses.
I approve that motion.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, water. Todd?
Well, so far things are going good with the water, except we'll come back in this month. We had, uh, Kevin, the company's name, but they had come in. We got the new vent cap put on the above ground tank. We got the riser put on the below ground tank. And the screens can be coming in for our exposed areas for the drain overflows. Get that, once that comes in, I will get that stuff taken care of. And we'll send all the pictures to the state. I'll send you the pictures.
Yeah.
And so, once we get that done, all of our deficiency should be in compliance.
Outstanding.
And it looks like the screen will be here. I think it's early next week, but we'll confirm that with them.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
And I did meet with, uh, right here. Windwater, uh, he, he stopped by and dropped off all our boxes for a remote.
And that is for our weight, remote meters, so that we can read them digitally. Windwater provides that to us.
Well, they charge us for them, but it's, it's protection for the new re- remote head part.
Right, but that's. Uh-huh.
Because the new ones they send out don't have that protective cap on them.
Yeah.
And hail can come in and damage them, and rather than paying sixty five or a hundred sixty five dollars for a new remote headpiece, you can put this five dollar box over it that protects it from hail.
Exactly.
So I will go through and put all those on to the meters, on the remote parts, and the ones that are having issues, I'll get them repaired.
Perfect, yeah.
Todd, and just so you have verbal approval, you can go into my yard and do it, because I think mine's inside the park.
Yes, it is, so, yes.
You're good to go in.
Yours is inside, inside the bench line area.
Yeah, and most of these remotes get damaged by weather, so these caps will, we have a couple that need replaced right now, so.
Yep. I do have the six new remotes in.
Okay.
And it's about to match the number of meters that we have.
Okay.
So, and then we still have a couple of new ones because I didn't realize that they changed the thing, so I thought they were broken, and he told me, no, uh, or it was just there, let, let me. Or Jim Erwin, he did tell me that these new ones are having issues because they didn't put that cap on them, so. But, no, he come and met with me this month, and he dropped them all off to say it was a shipping charge and stuff.
Nice. Well, that's great.
Alright, now, Todd, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On my water meter and all that, I got this, well, part of it is the old age wind help that is ugly and watering my yard. And all that, and now, and it's got a, when we installed the meters to begin with, that was four or five years ago.
Yeah.
Now, it's got a tube coming up and all that, and dah dah. Is that obsolete?
No, no.
Well, then what do we do with that?
It'll still stay the same, except for the gray box on the top.
To protect it.
Protect, protect, protect that reader device on it.
Why does that have to be above ground?
Because we don't have carbon fiber covers.
Okay, alright, okay.
The steel, the steel cup, the steel cover that's on, the man cover part of them prevents the signal from coming out.
Mine's a steel post PVC pipe that goes out here because it, that, the wire ties they put on.
Yeah.
It, it broke and all that, and the PVC pipe is over here. The doodad is here. Now, what are we gonna do about that?
When I put the new covers on, I'll make sure it's all secured back up to the post like it's supposed to be.
Alright, okay, alright. That's fine.
Alright. And.
Once that's done, then it'll be protected from the weather with that box that we're putting on these.
But they have to still be above ground?
Yes.
We can't afford those carbon fiber covers.
No, they're like a hundred, a hundred something a piece.
Well, that, that, that's fine. I mean, it's no biggie, but I, I just, I just wanted to know.
I, I brought that up to the board before. We have to go above ground with these remotes and do the fact that the carbon fiber covers will be great for just a regular meter pit, but like the one we have in town where they drive over it all the time, that carbon fiber will not work on that.
Alright, okay.
You drive over that thing, you crush that carbon fi- oh, and it lasts a few times, but then especially if you drive a truck over it, it's gonna.
Well, I, I understand all that.
Yeah.
So, but just like in my yard and all that.
Yep.
The, the hurrah goes off this way, the steel post per se.
Yeah.
Is this way, and this thing is going over here.
It'll, it'll be tied back up and secured properly when it's done.
Yeah, well, okay, alright, that's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
And then, um, Steve Dyer, has he gotten back in contact with you?
I've talked to him, and he's not in a great big hurry right now, because he's not ready to deal anything with that trailer, assuming they're only paying the monthly fee for not to be hooked up yet.
Good. Sure.
So.
Makes sense.
So he told me he'll get a hold of me when he's ready for it to be hooked up.
Okay.
I told him, don't make it the middle of the room.
And then, yeah, in the middle of the room. And then, um, Roseanne's place here that was for sale?
It just sold, so.
Okay, so.
So, I will get the new meter put into that one.
Yeah.
And get it ready for the new owners.
Good. And then the, the fish lot, you know where the market fish, okay, that has an old meter, but they pay a fee every month.
Yep. Yeah, I, like we discussed on that, I say we put the new meter in.
Yeah, exactly.
If they're paying every month already, they don't want to discontinue, sir. I say we put the new meter in, just as, because if it's the old meter, we have no idea if there's a leak.
No.
We don't get the remote reading that shows.
And since you're paying a fee, it should be upgraded.
Yes.
Just like the Roseanne place, because he pays, you know, forty two dollars every month, so.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so those two, and you have the meters, so.
Yes, I do.
Perfect, okay. Alright.
And real quick while we're on water topic, just to make everyone aware, I don't know if you're talking to us, but the training that we were supposed to go through on water, it was, it didn't, uh, being a wastewater, which we don't have.
We don't have.
Even though it didn't say it on the thing, but I talked to Tanny and a few at the state, so.
Yeah. Okay, I did.
Um, we are, we're still doing the training in December, but the other, um, freshwater one will be in January, so they're already gonna get some of the.
Alright.
For that, and she, she knows that that's what we're waiting on, because we did get a letter saying that we don't have a certified operator right now.
Yeah.
But they're, they're aware and they noted it, so they're all fine with it.
And, and that's gonna happen when?
December, January.
December is the first training, January is the second, but by, by January, they'll, we'll be certified and be done.
Otherwise, we, we won't be classed, really not this week.
Yep.
This last week. But.
So we're good there. So I'll just update the meeting, I'll put in the meeting minutes here to reflect the changing rates.
Yeah, just, I wanna make everyone aware, because when we got our confirmation later, it said wastewater, it was totally misleading, so I talked to them and I got it all straightened out.
Alright, so, and then the next thing I have is, um, the report water loss, so we're at four percent. Todd, it looks a little higher this month than last month. It may not be, because maybe it's because there's an extra day, I don't know. Where we lost three thousand gallons more this month than we did in the previous one.
Uh, some of that might be due to the railroad coming through.
Good, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because they parked down here in front of Shirley's bar, sorry. They parked down in front of Shirley's bar and filled the water truck up. All of a sudden, I was at work in Hot Springs, I'm getting reports from people in town that we have a leak because all the water's brown and all this, so I rushed back to find it out. And everything cleared back up, and then all of a sudden it turned brown again because they come and got another truckload.
So do you know who to contact over there? Because this has been made of, or can we put a lock on that hydrant?
I don't know if we can lock the hydrants or not, but I think they need to contact us if they're getting water, and they should be paying for that water, yes.
They should pay for a water. We don't have an agreement with them.
No.
Yeah.
Well, what do they get the water for, Todd? I, I'm just curious.
They're filling their tanker truck up to run down the tracks, spray the weeds along the tracks.
Alright, okay, alright, no.
So they're stopped down there at the Last Chance Loom down there, and they fill all that hydrant right there, and they fill their trucks, but they don't notify, notify anybody.
Right, right.
I wouldn't realize.
Because they're using our water for nothing.
Yeah.
But they're opening our hydrant. That is a problem in itself.
Yes.
That is a problem right there.
Because they could destroy that, and we'd never know it didn't work.
Correct.
So, okay.
I will contact whoever.
Well, but there's, there's two, two things there are, yes, uh, we, we should be notified that when they, uh, are gonna use our water.
Yes. Yeah. And they should, and they should pay.
And, and, and then, and then, then when they're gonna use our water.
And they should pay for that water.
And then they need to pay them.
Yep, absolutely.
I do not know, but he's the one I had talked to on conference line. Records that almost they're pulling out.
Same, yeah. I mean, if they're pulling out five thousand dollars at a time, you need to know this, because I mean.
Sorry, they pulled that much out, Todd?
I, I don't know what the truck takes. I'm guessing five dollars.
Well, it looks like they pulled about three thousand gallons out, because about, our water loss is about two percent, has been, and that's good. We do have some water loss.
Well, it's always gonna be that way.
Yeah.
Well, I've gotten compliments from a lot of people when they tell me we got a two percent water loss. They're like, big cities don't even go with just two percent. They have a lot of loss of that.
That's what we know. That's what we're saying.
They're usually about ten to twelve percent.
Alright, I agree with that.
That's about, that's about the average, but we're down two percent. That's excellent, so.
But, but they're, they're pulling water.
Yeah.
And, well, I'm sorry, if the railroad needs to.
Help save for it.
I'll see if I can get ahold of them or see what we can do with that hydrant.
Okay, you can't let me know. I'll get a number.
Alright.
I know somebody works for him, so.
Okay, good.
You gotta put a padlock on her, some, I mean, and that's another.
These hydrants, these hydrants, you can't padlock them.
Well, a padlock fire hydrant, you may not have one.
Is that?
Right. Yeah.
Alright.
You gotta know how much is going through it, though.
Yeah.
Valve.
Well, it's gonna be a meter.
I don't know, they tell you, there's no.
There are no meter, no nothing.
You can be at a meter for it, though.
And then we could charge the.
That would be easy.
We should be able to meter the flow somehow.
Yeah.
That's easy to do.
Well, they're the one who's metering. Put on the fire hydrant and tell them how much they're.
Yeah, it's, but it's pretty expensive to be a meter.
Taken out.
Right.
Helen's done the research. I'll go back and ask him.
Yeah, because I did notice, like, like I said, I was working on Hot Springs as a job, and I get a phone call. Glad to pack everything up, come back to here, find out what the heck's going on, if we got a break or what's going on.
Alright.
And, so.
Okay. That, or they get an agreement with us, something.
Yes.
Okay, so the one thing that I have under the water system is, um, when the state subpoenaed the water computer, and I did get confirmation, we are not getting that computer back.
That computer's gone.
It's been entered into state evidence, and that computer will not come back to us. So, when that, when the state did subpoena that computer last year, um, Shirley, Shirley and I scrambled to set up a new billing system. And so, what's been happening is the billing system is online, but I access it through my iPad to do all the billing. Um, so, the, now that I've got confirmation, we will not get that back. The water department needs to have a computer system and the software to set up the water billing, um, so we will need to purchase that. I have a, it's a very gross estimate. It's just so that in case I don't go over, I know I won't, but fifteen hundred dollars should cover the software and the computer. It should be well below that, um, for the water billing. And if I was to, if, if this was to be handed off to the finance officer or someone else, it would need to be have its, it would need to be self-sustainable, and right now it's not. You're relying on me to do that.
And then if it's up to you, then who, then that would be, so you have to.
Perfectly hermit here, because he can decipher my work, but, um, so, yeah, so that, that will need to be purchased, um.
So I know what you're saying, we need to buy a new computer.
For the water department.
For the water department?
Yeah.
And for the billing, and I already mentioned that at the last meeting, whether for the printing, the.
Yeah.
And we can do that out of the water funds, right?
That will come out of the water fund, because this is just, it would be a dedicated for the water department.
A, a dedicated to that function.
Yes, exactly.
So do we, do you need a motion to have Nikki, or are you gonna get it, or how are we?
Um, yeah, I can do that, because I've done the research on it. I know what, I kinda know what this system requirement should be, so I can do it.
I make a motion that we give the state the authority to spend up to fifty nine hours.
I'll second that. Like what it was, is us get it done.
For the water department.
And it's rich here. Wine and, 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 and.
Okay.
This is the moment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Who seconded that?
I did.
He did.
Okay.
As he was.
Talking, okay.
Rumping.
I just wanna make sure.
It was slipped in there. Yeah, alright, so we're, I'm still carrying a park yard hydrant installed, Todd, and I know we need to purchase that park yard hydrant, but at some point, it's gonna be a, wait till spring.
Did the car, did the car come in?
No, not yet.
So the other car, yeah, so.
I have an issue there.
What's your issue?
If you go back about three minutes ago, it was already supposed to be done, and all of a sudden we're ordering perks for doing that. Somebody blowing smoke up some of that.
We didn't even order, because I've been ordering.
No, it's not smoke, Ray. If you'd listened a little bit, you'd understand. We were waiting for the car to come in. The car still hasn't come in yet. Once that car comes in, I can get the car, I can go purchase the hydrant, and we can get it dug up and installed.
Yeah.
We're still waiting for the car.
The what?
The card.
The credit card.
The town card.
The town credit card.
Yeah.
I'll be a son of a bitch. Waiting for a credit card.
Yes.
And it's, because it's not critical. It doesn't, it's not.
No, of course it's not critical.
So it, we're just tracking it. It's okay.
That's okay, that's fine.
We're just tracking it, and at some point, it might get too late in the winter, and we'll just move it to spring. It's.
Well, that, that makes sense.
It's not a big deal.
And I am gonna follow up with Laura on that again tomorrow. She called and needed something last week, which I got to her for the card.
They needed some additional information on that.
And I needed some, because of the audit stuff.
Okay, well.
So I had to go get the letter.
Yeah.
Once, once the card, once the card comes in, I can go purchase the hydrant, and we can get it.
Yeah, nowhere is.
How much is a hydrant?
Do not know what they run currently.
But he needs some other parts to do that, too, not just the hydrant.
I just need hy- hydrant clamps, that's all I need.
Yeah.
I think my hydrant cost me less than one seventy-five.
Yeah.
I think they're like one fifty.
They're under two hundred, you know.
Under two hundred bucks.
But, it's not a big deal, it's not a, it's not mission failure, it doesn't get done right now, we're just tracking it, that's all. That's all, so, alright, so, um, the new flow meter, not installed yet.
They haven't got it yet, they haven't contacted me on the new flow meter, no.
Alright, and then.
And the rest of the, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, how's the app working?
The, uh, uh, rest, rest of the stuff, that, I keep a track of the flow and, and, or what, what are hidden in the tank, out of the tank.
Everything.
Pump running, all that.
It's all running good, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like that, it's great.
I know.
Oh, it's awesome, I've had no alarms or anything.
It's pretty cool, but he loves it.
I know, I need to say.
You know, we.
Yeah.
We had power go out, but I was able to look right up on everything, and realize that everything's still running, the well is not running when the power went out. So therefore it doesn't trip.
It didn't trip, okay.
Yeah.
It's only when it's running and the power flickers or whatever, that it trips it. But another thing that worked out, the button I worked out, no, and I, but on the app, I can look right up, and it tells me green or yellow, whether the pump's running, whether, you know.
Glad we can make your job a lot easier.
And you got, you got that all over and running, that's perfect.
Yep.
You don't have to run up there, go look at it.
No.
I know, Todd, are you the only one that's got that capability?
Nope.
No.
Do you want it, do you wanna see it on your phone?
I don't have it.
Oh, okay, that's the only way you can see it, you gotta be smart.
Christine's got it, Lance has got it.
Alright, okay, alright, okay.
I have it.
Travis.
Travis, sorry.
And Nikki can have it, too.
I have it as well.
Oh, you have it.
I have it uploaded yet, but I have.
Yeah, okay, but, so no, there's multiple people have it, so maybe.
Alright, okay, so, so we're, we're not, you know.
Not relying on one source.
If I shoot Todd, then then the, the rest of the.
Me, me, or I shoot back, so.
Don't worry, I.
Alright, let's move on.
Now you know why Ray doesn't want the app.
We don't wanna be here forever, alright, Rosen Streets.
We're not gonna accuse each other.
How's it going?
Alright.
Rosen Streets, how's it going?
Yeah, what do you do now?
And mowing, guess some clothes mowing as well.
She, uh, she mowed a little last week, I think, but she still, she still got some that she wants to catch up on. Depending on the weather, of course, but, um, that's about it for her.
Okay.
Um, from my standpoint, um, they had to take that ram back off. And was up at Rapid, he was down today, and we gotta put that on. And I put six gallons of hydraulic fluid in there, we still need some more, I talked to Nikki about that. To get it up to the full mark on the container, um, I just did all of the roads in town. And they should be good to, uh, without holes and dips and everything else, kinda ready for the snow to fly, hoping that they'll stay that good. But, um, yeah, that's kinda what I've got caught up in.
Question for you, when LTAP comes down to Hot Springs or Custer to do some training, would you like to go and be in and hear what they've got for some blade training? LTAP is.
For doing what?
For blade, for blade operations and new things that they're doing to help the gravel roads and stuff, they're gonna be coming out this way. Uh, I ran into them at the conference, and they said, we can tack you guys, whoever our road judge is, into their training, if you'd like to be a part of that. I don't think it costs us anything.
I think I've got as much training as I need on it.
I just asked.
I agree, Steve, we don't, we don't need another, more training on how to run a motorator.
The only reason I would, the only reason I would wanna go to is ask them why they don't fix the roads.
Well, that would be, might be a good thing to do, too, but, I, I just didn't know if it would be beneficial, if we felt that it would be beneficial to just see if there's anything new that they're recommending.
I guess if anybody's got complaints about the roads in town, they can send me, I guess.
Well, not, not.
I have, I don't, there has not been any complaints, nothing but accolades, so.
Nope.
Yeah, I, I don't think, yeah, Travis, I don't think that's a, a viable option.
Alright. Alright, is that it, Steve?
Uh, yes, pretty much, I've.
Good.
And we got that, I got, we got ten gallons of fuel yet, and I'm probably gonna be putting that in the blade. Uh, the loader's probably a third full or something like that, we may end up getting a couple more five gallon, uh, cans of that.
Rather than the.
Okay.
Yeah, they get treatment for that if we're coming in the winter.
Don't need any, let the fuel there. I'm, I'm not a expert, but I've done the heavy equipment business for fifty-some years. Let, let, let's get a realist.
It was up at the park, it was the only time we put, and it could get that way here, but running through the truck. Um, we had, I don't remember what it was called now, comes a little white jug, but we'd put one of those in a fifty gallon tank. But that was, I mean, it had to get cold to be able to do that, of course, we kept our trucks inside and, and that thing.
I think we're worrying about something that doesn't need to be repaired.
I don't foresee anything, uh, happening, um, I got it rigged up to where I can plug that blade in.
Do you get a plow, you need?
Oh, it's plugged in, okay.
And once it's plugged in, it should, should just fire right off.
Okay.
Should, shouldn't you look at getting a plow back on the dump truck, Steve?
I'm not gonna use it.
Nobody know plow works.
That plow is not made for gravel.
Okay.
Unless.
What you're saying is, uh, use the blade.
Huh?
What you're saying is use the blade.
I'm gonna use the blade, yeah.
Alright, okay.
Um, if you wanna set that back on the truck, in case I'm not around, he could take it out, but I'm not gonna use it.
Alright, okay, that's, that's fine.
Alright.
I'm just thinking we got the plow for it, it, yeah, when you use the plow on the roads, it goes, you can do the whole calendar in less than an hour, basically, the whole roads.
Well, I'm gonna use the blade, cause I got different ways of what I'm gonna do with pullouts.
Okay.
And that plow, you end up pushing more gravel in the damn road ditch, which makes it harder than hell to mow.
I don't think the plow works on that, like it's supposed to.
Well, that plow is not made for gravel roads.
Well.
And that's why you get a mess out there in the ditch.
Okay. Alright, good to know. Um, so we're good. And Rosen Streets, we're good there.
Well, we didn't talk about that in the country, was that okay?
Um, there's a FYI.
Okay.
Let's see, uh, building maintenance, prepare for winter, so I'm not sure other than making sure the heat source is on. I think that's what we usually do.
I don't, I don't really have right now, it's community center, right?
Yeah, in this one.
In this one, yeah, but we keep the heat on here.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be, we set it to, and I think we, last year, I remember they kept the heat on the community center, but they set it at certain temperature.
Yeah.
Yeah, they only.
Sixty, sixty degrees at the, to the.
And that's only in the bathrooms and the kitchen, they use it, usually use what, a little heater in the kitchen?
Uh, they're, they're, well, actually, they're, they're, the kit, or a heater in both bathrooms.
With a fan on it. Right, yep.
And, uh, the, the kitchen is pretty much, uh, wha- whatever the room temperature is. And the room temperature or the thermostats, I'm, to, two furnaces are set at sixty degrees in winter time.
Yep, that's a mattress, as long as the doors they close, it's fine.
And, 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 uh, whatever, so I mean, I don't see that any.
There's no, there's no heat in the kitchen, though, so they used to have a little heater they'd keep in there.
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Blowing under, blowing under the kitchen sink.
Uh, not to my knowledge.
There used to be, so.
Well, not to my knowledge, but if you keep the rest of the building at sixty degrees.
But that's only those rooms, that's not the whole building.
Yes, the, the thermos, thermostats on both furnaces are set at sixty degrees.
Right.
Yeah, they were running the big blower last year, for the whole thing.
Oh. That's a lot of, that's a lot of heat to heat that whole building.
That's why that bill's expensive.
Yes, that's why we only use.
Well, well, I'm just talking on that, and I, I, I tell you. Now, why does it cost four thousand dollars to heat this old building?
It didn't cost four thousand for this building, who told you that?
You did.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
No, Ray, I can tell, I'll show you the numbers, it does not cost that to heat this building.
Well, then, then, then I'm, I'm mistaken, but it was the power saying that, 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 that this building here should not cost more than it should cost me to heat my building.
It doesn't, they're cost about the same, that's why we're going to look at upgrading the systems.
Hit record.
Is it not recording?
So, if it doesn't, I'm not sure where you got the number, I think that's, I think it's just a misunderstanding, but.
It is. Good.
But it's not four thousand to heat this building, but it costs us a lot to, to heat both buildings, and that's why we're looking at.
Well, I don't know. Well, I was gonna say, the, the, the community center, I don't know what you wanna call it, yes, I can understand that it costs, uh, some money to heat that.
But look, we're just trying to make sure we're prepared for winter, so we don't have to deal with frozen pipes, so as long as we think it's prepared, we're good.
Alright, and, and, and. Okay, I, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, we used to take this little power pan, or heater, and have it put the fan on it, blowing underneath the kitchen sink, and kept the kitchen door closed, and then we heat the two bathrooms in there. And that's all we ever used to heat everywhere at time, not the whole building.
So we'll just, um, so if you're comfortable with the community center, the way that it's set up.
I'm comfortable with that.
Then we're good, so Todd, if you can take care of the town hall, then we're good, alright.
Yep.
Alright, animal control, she's not here, okay, community center committee, when's the break, next breakfast?
I just, I just had a quick question, was she gonna bring in coordinates, or have you seen something?
No, she wants to, um, look at updating that, so that's under her, so that she can look at updating.
Okay, okay, there we go.
FYI. Um, community center committee, when's the next breakfast?
The next breakfast is, uh, October eleventh. Steak and eggs.
Oh.
Hey, Brown.
Should have a good turnout with that. Alright, aluminum can collection. Folks are still dropping aluminum cans off over here in front of the old fire hall, assuming that the community center is collecting them for profits or for donations, so is that true?
It probably is true, uh, I haven't addressed that one really. I don't know what, what the hell you do, I mean, they, they, they wanna drop cans off, they, they wanna do that. And then sometimes they do, and then sometimes they don't, I don't know what, uh, answers.
It's an eyesore, and then the cans just get left all over the place, so I'm gonna put a sign up there that says, don't drop them off here. So if the community center has a place to put them, that's fine, but we're not gonna collect them over there anymore, cause they just get put everywhere, and then I'm, I'm cleaning them up every week.
Alright, alright, well, then we have to address that issue.
And then if somebody is willing to haul them off from the community center committee, that's good, but the town's not gonna haul them off.
Alright, right, I, I, I agree totally with that, so.
Yeah.
I will address that little issue.
Okay, good, alright, so I'm gonna put a sign up there that says, no more sign, no more cans.
We'd return those old trash cans upside down, so.
And then someone turns them upside right and puts the cans in them.
Oh, they do, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, I'll, I'll, I will address that one.
Okay, good, and I'm gonna call Cheyenne about those cans, so, I just haven't got to it yet, alright, so.
Which cans?
They're broken trash cans in front of the old fire hall, and, um, I don't know how we swap those, or if they've already brought us new ones, and we need to get those turned in, I don't know how they do that.
These I've been up to, and I don't remember the name, now, somebody needed a new trash can, theirs was totally.
Well, I was just on that, oh, shit.
And the new trash cans are secured inside the building, because they were starting to disappear, so we've secured them inside the building, so if someone needs a new trash can, you can call me and I'll.
In the past, we've always kept the good cans inside.
We are keeping them inside now, okay.
Yeah, cause they said that theirs was just all gone, so.
Okay, good, so, if you tell them to contact me, and I'll, I'll swap them out.
I've actually got it down at the community center, or down on my office desk, who it is, so I'll just let you know the address.
Okay, good. Perfect, we'll take care of them.
Yeah, they stopped in, and I forgot to tell you, that's great.
What you got?
Their big trash can that the wedding party brought down to the, uh, out of our community center, whatever. Uh, and they've been told about four times, come pick it up, and they seem to not give it.
I told them. Well, when I talked to them last time, they said they tried twice, but, uh, when they came to pick it up, it's full trash, so now we're trying to keep the trash out of it.
So somebody's using it?
Yeah, we don't know.
And, and that, that's an issue.
And I know Steve, Steve lives across the street, but he's, he's been trying to, he, he's been trying to watch it as well when he's here, to try to watch and make sure there's no trash in it, that if, if there is, he tries to remove it, just so they'll pick it up. But I did call them, and they said, once it's empty, and I said, well, it's empty now, but they haven't come back.
But anyway, so now, that's a little bit of an issue, that the wedding party, lack of better word, they, they ordered one to have brought over, and then since then, nobody seemed to want to come and get it.
Yep. Yeah, it's unnerving to pick up, they just keep telling me at school every time they come by.
And I don't believe all that, but.
I know a couple of days it was, but I know last week it wasn't, because I, I speak up, everything out of it.
So, so they'll just need to get on their, uh, case just a little bit.
I think it's a lesson learned for next time somebody wants to bring trash, get out of here.
Yeah, don't give them their security deposit back, when they take it.
Travis, I have one down at my house, it's been there for fifteen years.
And they don't wanna pick it up?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, I just, uh, a little bit of the story back when we had a church here, the preacher was bringing his trash over and putting it in my dumpster. But it was in your room, the material, but it, it, it's no big deal, I, I, but, but they're, they're, they're saying losing money.
Yep.
Yep, alright, uh, board of trustees, um.
Park committee, oh.
I didn't have any, my mail call this week, or this month, um, and I don't have any notice of meeting events that will, that anyone will be attending. Let's see, and anything else under board of trustees?
I can't think of anything.
No. Alright, um, old business, uh, the, the proposal to open first Cedar and Poplar Streets, that engineering and utility survey is pending at Helm's. Last I got, was it's on their list.
Yep.
Um, update and organize of all town ordinances, we have the resolution that addresses mobile homes in the town. That needs to be. Put together, sent to the attorney for review, so I have not completed that yet. We have ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero two, which we will have, um, a first reading of tonight, that's the utility ordinance. It needs to be updated and addressed, and then we have resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one, which addresses. Water rates, in particular, the water meter. And so, that resolution will be rescinded with the resolution when we update the water rates. For the util, updated utility ordinance, um, so that's down in new business. So that's what we're tracking for those at this time. Then water construction phase two, um, we are starting to get bills. Of course, people wanna get paid, but we have not heard when they're gonna kick off phase two, so.
I know they were coming through GPS and stuff, they were wall that street.
Good.
They did wall that street and second street, I talked to them, they were doing that.
And the particular bill we had is for the planning phase, they closed that off, so everything else now should be after the work starts.
Yeah, I, from what I, when I talked to Helm, it doesn't sound like they're gonna break ground until probably March.
Oh, great, last time they did November, and that was something right there, March will be perfect.
I I hope it's March, I hope they don't get ahead.
Well, you had said when we talked to them, that's what they were looking at.
We were just asking, just kinda like, hey.
Hey, what's going on?
Alright, the water outage communication plan, um, I have not really done too much of that with anything with that. We haven't really need to worry about that yet.
What we're doing is working, right?
Is working.
I mean, we're not, we're not having to do much, but we've done, is what we're.
Is that so nice to know, you with Christine, can I work on something with that?
Alright. Um, opt out water meter customers, I I I have, um. From my perspective, this is complete, um, I have the surveys that have been sent in, or at least all the surveys that were gonna be, that received. I've received eight out of the fourteen, we do know who our opt out water meter customers are, and who is gonna be impacted in phase two. So have all the information we need, so I entertain a motion that we can remove that from old business.
Well, if it's complete, I don't think we even. We've got all the action items that we had done, we've got the surveys, we know who's gonna do whatever else.
And don't don't want water, then then we'll get water.
Yep, we have some of them that chose, they're good, to ma, they've made their decision, so. Alright, the Wind Cross Conservancy lease, I asked for an update from Rhonda this week, I haven't heard back from her. Um, from our discussion where our target is to have something in place in January twenty six with that lease, so. Um, if we have to use the existing lease to go forward, we will do that, um, let's see.
Is that the old lease you pulled?
This is, what's that?
Is that the old lease that you had pulled the copy of?
Alright, and then.
I don't believe that she did have on that, she was supposed to do repairs on the ground.
Yep.
Built some outbuildings, some were gonna be permanent structures, some were gonna skid.
Right.
And that stuff was all supposed to be done, nothing's been done, the only thing that's been done is that it's been torn apart by patrol.
Yeah, and that's why we offered our discussion, um, we offered the lease to her, so that she could could. Give her input on it, and then the town would review it, and we would give input, and then we could let the attorney kind of figure out the best way forward. Yeah, there's some history there.
Originally when that came out, she gave everybody a little binder notebook with all these plans, and all these buildings she was gonna do, and how she's gonna do grandstands, and stuff like this up there.
I think her health over overcame all those events, yeah, so.
Well, that was, that was brought up because she had the first lease, that she wanted to re-up it for another five year type thing, and the town had given that to her. I thought because she didn't wanna do all these buildings and all of a sudden lose it, so the town gave her the other five year lease part of it, and then still nothing's happened, so.
Yeah. We're gonna do the best we can.
Well, we'll see what happens.
Yep, see what happens.
Alright, the, and then, then we have the second reading, which I will just read the heading only. Of, um, the ordinance to supplementally appropriate funds, and it's ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two. And ordinance to supplementary, supplementally appropriate funds, be it ordained by the Board of Trustees for the town of Buffalo Gap. County of Custer, South Dakota, that the following sun is supplementally appropriated to meet the obligations of the municipality. And comply with S D C L nine dash twenty one dash seven.
That's all the waterfront and stuff.
It's the, yeah, all the money that we brought in from insurance, sale of property, those types of things, um, so. So, uh, the chair, and we'll entertain a motion, uh, for the second reading of the ordinance.
I'll say it.
Okay, we'll second it, good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The second reading of the budget appropriation, twenty twenty six budget appropriate orientation ordinance, so. Appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero three, twenty twenty six appropriation ordinance. Be it ordained by the municipality of Buffalo Gap, that the following suns are appropriated to meet the obligations of the municipality for twenty twenty six.
No changes since the last.
No changes since the last.
I'm going to approve that one.
Last year, yep. I'll sit her, move. I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Okay, then in new business, we have, um, an update, and to the ordinance to administer water services. So, we had a ut, we have a utility ordinance in place right now, the only utility that we provide is water services. Um, and so, this would be the first reading of the new ordinance. Now, we still, we, we need to have the new ordinance in place before January, so we still have another month. Before we have to read this ordinance, um, for the first reading. Um, so that would give everyone time to review this, and provide any feedback or comments. Um, back on the ordinance, but the big thing with this ordinance, it doesn't change anything, so to speak. It makes it easier to read, is the, are the big changes. And it puts our rates that were in the ordinance into a resolution, so that the rates can be changed. Easier with one reading instead of two through updating an ordinance, so it puts our rates in a resolution. So it separates the two processes, um, to make it easier to manage the utility rates, is what it does. But it does not change the way we operate water. Um, the one thing that I made clear in this ordinance is, is that there will be one pit for resident or commercial business. So, we do have a, or there could be an instance, based on the rate of the ordinance. That there were some shared pits, I know there is one shared pit in town, so there's two shared pits, thank you. Um, and so it makes it clear that from the establishment of this ordinance forward, there will be no more shared pits, and.
Now, does that mean we're gonna go through and put the pits into the places?
No, they were, their grandfather, those paragraphs remain, but it just makes it clear that upon new or additional services. There will only be one pit or per dwelling or business, and that includes apartments, mobile homes. Motels, hotels, so it does make that very clear. It also makes clear that the town is not responsible for any repairs. From the service line that connects to the meter, to the residence or commercial property. The town is not authorized to do the work on that side of the property either, as the town of Buffalo Gap. Now, if private residents want to help out, someone else, that's on them, but the town's not responsible for that. So it just make, it just makes it clear some of those things that weren't very clear in the last one. But other than that, it just, I have it, um, where it's just easier to read, and things flow better, um, with the re, with the ordinance.
You just need a motion for the first reading then, huh?
So, we can, we can do the first reading this evening, um, or we can take a wait for one. We can have one more month to wait, but we would have to read it for November fourth to be effective January.
No, I'm just saying I would like some time to read it.
And I'm fine with that, um, we do still have time with the resolution as well, um, and I will, I'll send everyone another updated copy. To where you have a good clean copy, cause I had to fix some of the heading things on it as well, cause it wasn't in kind of that ordinance format that it needed to be in. But we do have time. So next meeting, we'll, so, uh, the first reading will be done in the next meeting. Um, as well as the resolution for the water rates, the next meeting will also be the first reading for that as well. So with the water rates, one thing I want to, um, just address with regard to that resolution, is is that this resolution will rescind. Um, twenty nineteen dash zero one, which is, um, resolution of the town of Buffalo Gap to adjust the water rates. And so what that resolution did is it established the five dollar water meter fee. And so, what will happen is, is the five dollar water meter fee has now, it has now. Um, accumulated the amount of money it was supposed to, according to the meeting minutes that were written. So, we're supposed to pay back the general fund at twenty five thousand dollars, it was really twenty four thousand and eight hundred and something.
Correct, yeah, because that one got brought up, and it got postponed and made me miss about four months to get into meters. Because Terry Kaiser, said it was, it was twenty five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars originally for the meters. And Terry Kaiser's like, oh, it's over twenty five thousand, I have to bring it for a vote, or open up for bid, excuse me.
Right.
So I got hold of Jim Urban, he dropped it down below twenty five thousand, and Kim and I brought, proposed it the next meeting, and we accepted it. And that's how we got to meet it, but I had to wait four months to get them.
So I do have those meeting minutes here, it was twenty four thousand, eight seventy six, so that water meter fund has accumulated. That amount of money and then some.
So the five dollar will be eliminated, eliminate, eliminated out the bill.
So, in that resolution, it al- also said that that money can be used for maintenance and repair of the water system. And so that is what we did this year, that's how we paid for this falling and all the deficiencies that we've had, that's how we paid for the deficiencies. And so, um, in this proposed water rates resolution, the, um, monthly maintenance fee will, um, be raised. From twenty five dollars a month to thirty dollars a month, and the water meter fee will go away. So essentially, your bill will not go up or down, it will stay the same, and that five dollars will be absorbed into the water meter. Or into the water sales fund now, so it'll be part of the enterprise, so your water bills will never, not change.
Oh, they're gonna change by the new twelve dollar charge come January.
That's different, yeah, so, yeah, surcharges are different from the water bill, right? Even though they're billed on the water bill, but they're not part of the water.
Okay.
Um, so that's what, um, these res, res, this, what the water rates will do. So, the monthly maintenance fee will go from twenty five to thirty dollars, and the five dollar meter fee will.
Come up to go.
Go away. Um, that will lessen the management of those funds, so we're managing the water meter fund, and the water fund, and all these other funds. So that will lessen the management of that fund. Then in addition, and that's, those surcharges are not in this resolution, because they already have a resolution. So the twelve dollar surcharge resolution for phase one, that's a resolution in, of itself. And then in January first, the water bill will see a surcharge of seventeen dollars added to it for phase two. Um, so that is already established by resolution.
And about how many years will that be for like phase one?
Thirty.
Thirty years for phase one, and it'd be another thirty years for phase two?
Thirty, so the more water meters that we can connect, and the more people that can help pay back those bonds.
Will lessen that.
The less that we could potentially have to pay individually, um, in the future, so. We need to get them connected and pay them. So that is the change in the water rates, and then I'm making a cha, a proposed change to update, to up. Um, increase the late fee from ten dollars to fifteen dollars, um, for customers. I know that creates a financial hardship, but we have pretty recurrent late customers every month, and I did provide everyone a. A list of the delinquencies, and I don't know if this will help or not, so.
Okay, can I speak now?
Oh, sure, you can speak, I'm done.
Hmm, okay, alright, my opinion.
Okay.
If you don't pay your water bill, your water gets shut off.
And we take care of it.
End of second, I don't have any quarrels and all that, if you don't pay your water bill, the water gets shut off. And I don't wanna hear any whiner, that I don't, poor, poor pitiful me, I'm sorry, I'm.
So we do.
I I I paid my bills, and if you don't pay yours, and I'm just gonna point you, Todd, if you don't pay your water bill, you're gonna have no water, you're gonna stink.
That's right.
So we do take care of that.
That's my, my total opinion, and I'm not gonna, ver- very, uh, at all. If you don't pay your water bill, you don't get any water, because. If you want water, you're gonna have to pay for it.
That's right.
Is it gonna be extra to turn it back on?
So, the current.
That that is, that's, I'm I'm saying no.
Hold on. Hold on, the current ordinance, you do have, there is a reconnect fee established in the current ordinance. In the new ordinance, it is. Not specifically stated that there needs to be a reconnect fee. And for reason is, is there are some circumstances where this is just where my own. Moral and ethics come into place, where people do struggle to pay their bills, and a fifteen dollar late charge is enough. I can't disconnect and reconnect them for fifty bucks, I'm not gonna do that, it's just, that's compounding the problem when you have.
And 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 I would have to agree with that, but if I have to shut the water off, then. What they can do to turn that off.
They're always having a hardship.
They're having a hardship.
That's just compounding the hardship by doing that, in my eyes.
That's exactly right, so that is where.
Go get a job.
I'm one.
Some people do have a job, and still can't str, and struggle to make it, Ray.
Let's, let's just bring it back to the topic. So, I'm, I'm not looking to make folks' financial hardships any harder. And so I'm one board member, I don't have the final say on what that reads in the or, in the ordinance, so. I'm happy to consider input into that, but right now, it's not specifically stated. That if it's disconnected for delinquency, that they will be reconnected at a twenty five dollar fee, because. I think that's a little bit.
If they pay the late fee and stuff, I, I'm just saying, the the biggest question that I have with, in the operational. Practicality of it is, they're late, they have a late fee, when is the cutoff, that's the biggest question.
Right now, the ordinance is, because what we have in place is three months for a hundred and fifty dollars delinquent.
Well, some people get a happy over a hundred and fifty dollars in one month.
That's right, so in the new ordinance, I removed the dollar amount, and if you're delinquent, two months. Because what has happened in cases in this town is, is that they've let it go too long, and then people get under so far, and they never catch up.
Right.
So at two months, you have to say, that's it, I've gotta, I've gotta give you a termination notice, you can't let it go any further, cause. At three months for seventy three dollars ninety two cents, you're over two hundred and twenty dollars now, or close to two hundred and twenty dollars in a water bill.
Yep.
Plus late fees, so that's forty five dollars on late fees, so that's a considerable amount of money.
Okay, I have another question outside of that, sanitation, right?
Yes.
So twenty two dollars, is that per can, is that your strabase, uh, you know, cause we put it here nine dollars for up to three thousand gallons, three dollars for one thousand gallon per pit. But twenty two dollars, you know, if some people didn't know, they could think that they could go grab another can from over here and put it in front of their house, and then.
And that's been, and and I caught that today, and I put per trash can, so.
You have it with per trash can.
It is per trash can.
Yep, alright, but minimum of the one, if you already have a water.
And that is very clear.
You need to make that clear.
It is clear, now that's more clear in the ordinance as well, is that everyone had, who has water has a trash can, it's not optional. Um, if there's not a dwelling on the property, and the property is just an empty lot, I'm not sure that a trash can is. You know, necessary, but if there's a dwelling, there has to be a trash can. Because we have to have a minimum number of customers for Cheyenne to come and pick up.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, so next month, we will redo the first reading of the ordinance and the resolution. And that way everyone can have sufficient time to provide input onto those, onto those. And Ray, I consider your thoughts and I agree, but there are times when folks hit the bottom and they need assistance, so. Alright.
I don't believe it.
Alright, well.
I'm sorry.
Um, I'm glad that you've not had to experience that.
I do not believe.
So. The next item that we have is, um, we have a USDA loan from. I can't determine whether it was ninety six or ninety seven, we took it off, I have two different dates, ninety six, it was about June or so, ninety six.
I don't know what month, I just told me here, yeah.
I have Sunday to June, I have Sunday to January of ninety seven, so we have a USDA loan, and it drill, and it drilled the second well. Over here.
On Oak Street.
Yeah, on Oak Street, we took out, we got a loan for a hundred thousand dollars at four point something percent, eight seven five percent or something to that. Effect, and it's come to our attention that there is supposed to be a fund set up for that, and so. We have Hope, last name, Block, to, um. Uh, help us understand that, and so she is here to talk to that, and then to, um, talk to any other services that she has from.
So I work, I work for the Midwest Assistance Program, um, World Development and D A N R come to us with loan compliance issues. So that's how I got involved with this process, and so like Christine said, in nineteen ninety six, Buffalo Gap took out this loan. And in that loan agreement, it was said that there's supposed to be a reserve account. Which, for I guess twenty nine years, hasn't been set up, hasn't been funded. And so, um, the representatives at World Development said in order to fix that and be compliant, you just have to basically make a motion and say. We're setting aside five thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars in this reserve fund until it's paid off, and then you can use the money. And it's paid off next year.
Five thousand seven ninety six.
Yep, and they don't take that money, it's just a fund that should have had money set aside for the last twenty nine years, and it just hasn't. So in order to be compliant for the next year until your loan is paid off, that's what you have to do.
So, can I ask some questions?
Of course, yeah.
What was the purpose of the reserve fund, and just out of curiosity?
So they make you set up this re- reserve fund, um, to save money, because you're taking out a thirty year loan. And so by the time this project is paid off, you probably have to do some maintenance.
Right.
And so that's what that fund is for, to protect you, it's saving your own money, it's just.
So a hundred thousand dollar loan, we only had to have five thousand set aside?
I guess so, and honestly, the silly part of it is, is World Development can't even find those original documents from nineteen ninety six. Um, that's state the exact verbiage of it, but all they know is that's the exact amount that needs to be set aside now.
So, then I'm gonna ask another question, for twenty nine years, how come this hasn't come to anybody's attention? So, then I'm gonna ask another question, for twenty nine years, how come this hasn't come to anybody's attention?
I know, I know, and so it's one of those things where, um, it's just an oversight, and not, not by, uh, you know, anybody's real. Like, I know you've had a little bit of turnover, and so probably when they get, um, the things that they definitely need for loan compliance, they're like, okay, we got what we need, we'll just move forward. But they're a little bit more picky this year, and so they're not gonna move forward and just let it slide.
So then, why not just pay it off?
You could pay it off.
We can pay the loan off and then.
I think you can, and I think you can, um, I guess I would have to double check with that.
I'd entertain us just paying it off if we had the money, I mean, we'd have to look at our budget and stuff, but out of the re- yeah, out of our general fund, just to be done with it, so we don't have to do this other BS, administrative accounting for a year when we.
Well, yeah, and honestly, it would just be something that Nicole would have a line item in your, um, cash, in your cash where it's broke out into water sewer, or what, whatever you have, like.
Water. Water.
General water, general and water, um, and it would just be.
Yeah, cause that, that well they started to dig, they de- they contaminated somehow, it was never been able to be used.
Yeah, and never, we'd never use it, yeah.
Nope, it's cap top, perfectly.
So we paid for a well, we never used it.
Oh, yeah, well, or the new well?
Was supposed to be the new well.
Yes, and you're still paying for it, that's a very benefit.
Yeah, a deep total.
Yeah.
For a year.
Well, the problem is, is you have to do it.
So what is, what happens?
Unless you pay it off.
Well.
What is the non-compliance, what's the, what's the penalty for non-compliance?
Check and see if you paid it off. Um, you may not be able to get loans with South Dakota.
Oh, have already three million dollars.
I was like, we've already got three million dollars.
And, uh, and I don't know if there's penalties or whatever that they exist.
And once you pay it off, I mean, if you pay it off and then you're not complying with.
If you want to pay it off, definitely, you could check into that, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but it's one of those things where in nineteen ninety six, the same people sitting here signed that agreement and said, this is what we're going to do, and it never was done, unfortunately, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So what's the advantage of, of, uh, signing it now or giving you four dollars and eighteen cents, what's the advantage of, of doing it now?
We don't have to mess with it anymore.
Well, and, and Terry or, Rick Christine, but, but I don't see the advantage now.
Yeah, that's what I said.
The advantage is being compliant and not having a big red flag over your community saying, we don't follow the rules.
How do I say this? F U G M.
Well, right, she's just a messenger.
Yeah, no, and honestly, I.
But, 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 I, I, I'm, yeah, I understand that, young lady.
And she's just a messenger.
And so if you would like to pay off the loan, I can see if that's, that is a.
Yeah.
I think that would be the, the, it's not the same way to do it.
Cause you probably don't have a lot left, and then you just don't have to deal with.
And what's the outstanding val- what is the outstanding balance of, what's the payoff?
Well, I would say, I would, I would like to understand the payoff, but also if we do pay it off, does that, does that make this obsolete then at that point, or not?
Well, right, it should be, so, so I'll find out tomorrow then, um, if you can pay it off, and what the payoff amount would be.
It should be, but I wanna make sure of that too.
Yeah.
Actually, we basically have one year left on the.
I know, and that's why I said this is silly that you're even dealing with it, but, um, like I said, like she said, I'm the messenger, so they said, no, we want it done, and that's why.
Don't shoot the messenger, so, so, I look, so far, they've been compliant to all the loan payments, everything, right?
The loan payments, yes, it's just for some reason, they have, nobody checked on this, this silly reserve fund that.
Yeah, so.
It was never reported either to the state.
It's like, what, uh, you know, when you have an audit done, they pick three things that they're gonna really focus on this year, and this is just one of those things that they're looking for.
Truth is, the years I sat on the board, I'd never even heard about it.
Right.
I thought that thing was totally obsolete and gone already, you know, I never heard anything about.
Yeah, especially considering you don't even use the well.
No.
Yeah, we don't.
It, it's been abandoned, the pumps full, the pipes full, all of the above, right, Todd?
I think the pipe's still on the ground, but it's all completely cap top, there's no pump, nothing.
So. All right, for the sake of time, Hope, you have anything else, I'm not rushing.
No, I don't, I do not, I'm checking, I'll check on that, and I'll get back to you, thank you.
So you're gonna find out.
Thank you, thanks so much for coming to the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
All right, the last item was department revenue, we discussed that already, um, and so.
I'm working on that this week, and so I didn't figure out.
Yeah, thank you.
So there's no motion on that that we have to do?
We don't need.
Right now, we gotta figure it out.
Yeah, we figure it out.
Okay, uh, public time, anyone interested in public time?
One thing I forgot to mention in my deal is, um, I don't think you've done anything yet, although I know you haven't gotten out of there, but those branches under the power line.
Well, no, we haven't done anything with that yet.
Right, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal right now, but just to mention that it's not been done yet.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, is that our problem, or is that power life?
It's our problem. It's off of their main line, anything going to a building is the owner's.
Alright, okay, alright, okay, okay.
All right, okay, anything else public time? No executive session, all right.
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Yeah, we're bringing that.
I see, we'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
The post, motion carries, next meeting will be November third.
November third.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Todd.